I'd like to call the city council meeting to order, please would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening everyone and welcome again. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Kerr. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. It's my pleasure to read a couple of proclamations this evening. One for Autism Acceptance Month and also National Library Week. The resolutions are as follows. Whereas autism or autism spectrum disorder refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech and nonverbal communications. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, autism affects an estimated one in 59 children in the United States. And whereas autism is the result of neurological disorder that can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic backgrounds. And whereas autism is estimated to be the fastest growing developmental disability in the United States by the Center for Disease Control and Autism and Developmental Disabilities Monitoring. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention, as well as ongoing support for family, doctors, therapists, and educators can positively impact persons with autism to achieve better outcomes. And whereas persons with autism should have access to appropriate services throughout their lifetime so that they may achieve their greatest potential and lead happy and productive lives within their communities. Now therefore I stand worth Mayor of the City of Beatrice to hereby proclaim April 21 as Autism Acceptance Month and encourage all citizens to be more aware of autism, promote acceptance, and become more informed about programs, services, and opportunities to support individuals with autism. Witness my hand on official seal of the City of Beatrice this fifth day of April 2021. And I'm going to present this to Ted Fairbanks, who has brought it to our attention every year. Ted?
Thanks.
Congratulations. Next is a proclamation regarding National Library Week. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community. And whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, even checking out internet hotspots and laptops. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the population they serve and ensure equity for access of all. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. And whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries are cornerstone of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore I stand worth Mayor of the City of Beatrice to hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 4th through the 10th, 2021. During this week I encourage all residents to visit their library online to access resources and services. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities. Witness my hand on official seal of the City of Beatrice this fifth day of April 2021. And our library director, Joanne Niemann, is with us this evening to accept this. Doug wants a picture. Want to think about it? Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move into the regular agenda. I beg your pardon, one other item. We have the promotion of one of our police officers and to do the honors is our Chief of Police Bruce Lang.
Mayor and city council, I'm really pleased to present to you a promotion tonight. We lost Sergeant Doug Coon, who retired from the department and moved on to state probation. And quite pleased with the applicants that we had for the position. It was a tough decision. However, Mr. Temple Meyer has appointed Derek Kosick to fill that sergeant position. And so he'll be one of our night sergeants. Super critical position. There's nobody out there but them at night and he's got to make a lot of decisions and do a lot of things without anybody to ask or turn to. So it's a real important position for the city and I know Derek's going to do a great job. So with that, I want to pin this badge on you. Get rid of the silver, switch to gold.
Go to the gold.
It's just like, it'll only bleed for a little bit.
All right. And with that, then he has to be re-sworn in. Who promised me she would wear her flat shoes tonight because Derek and I are a little bit challenged in that regard.
So I just need you to read that out loud to me.
I, Derek Kosick, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and that I take this obligation freely without mental reservation for purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of police sergeant according to law and to the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of a political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. And that during such time I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or this state by force or violence. So help me God.
Sign along.
First is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. Will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on March 15th, 2021 as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of Boasor report of claims in the amount of $2,407,419. Item F, approval of Boasor report of claims in the amount of $31,619.55. G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, approval of special designated license application of St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Congregation of Beatrice for a fundraiser event to be held on April 30th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 11:59 PM at the Red Barn Farm, 1038 West Sergeant Road, Beatrice, Nebraska. I, Resolution Number 6700, appointing Derek Fletcher to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. Item J, Resolution Number 6701, appointing Jim Franz as the alternate to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. K, Resolution Number 6702, entering into an emergency dispatch service inter-local agreement marked as Exhibit A, attached hereto and incorporated by reference with the County of Gage, Nebraska, a body politic and corporate, to operate a county-wide enhanced 911 system and a radio dispatching system on behalf of County of Gage for a term ending on June 30th, 2022. L, Resolution Number 6703, executing a memorandum of understanding setting forth the significant terms, expectations, and mutual understandings of the city and the County of Gage in establishing the governing board. M, Resolution Number 6704, entering into an easement agreement with Marcia R. Regir and Karen R. Beatty for a temporary easement and general utility easement for a water main project. Item N, Resolution Number 6705, approving a request from the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce to close Highway 136, which is known as Court Street, from Third Street to 19th Street on Saturday, June 26th, 2021 between 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM for the Homestead Days Parade. O, Resolution Number 6706, granting the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce and their designees permission to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise upon city property located in Charles Park, Fifth Street between High Street and Ella Street, the alley to the south, and the parking lot near the Carnegie Building, Fifth Street between Ella Street and Court Street, Beatrice Water Park and Chautauqua Park as part of the annual Homestead Days Event on the dates of June 24th, 2021 through June 27th, 2021. E, Resolution 6707, granting the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce and their designees permission to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise on Fourth Street between Court Street and High Street as a backup location for Jay Husker swap meet in the event of flooding at Chautauqua Park as part of the annual Homestead Days on the dates of June 25th, 2021 through June 27th, 2021. And item Q, Resolution Number 6708, entering into a termination of contract, assignment, and assumption of Cortland contract, a non-competition agreement, and any and all other documents necessary to complete the asset acquisition from Sanitary Garbage Company Incorporated. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda?
H, just for clarification.
Which one?
H.
Item H? All right, sir. Anyone else? Anything else? Anyone from the public? Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of H be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second. By Claybaugh, second by Morgan, that all items under the consent agenda with the exception of item H be approved, accepted, and/or ratified. Your vote please. That is approved, 7-0. Heard that is, Mr. Claybaugh, number H?
I move an approval of special designated license application of St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Congregation of Beatrice for a fundraiser event to be held on April 30th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 11:59 PM at the Red Barn Farm, 1038 West Sergeant Road, Beatrice, Nebraska.
Second. Moved by Claybaugh, second by Morgan, that we further discuss the designated license application of St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Congregation. Mr. Barnard?
For clarification, it's a designated license for?
Alcohol.
Alcohol. And before us, even though it's out of city limits, because it's in a two-mile zone, is that why they apply to us?
Yeah, at times the Laker Control Commission asked them to come to us and get permission from us rather than the county.
Thank you.
This is something they've done on a manual basis.
I didn't recognize them, but thank you.
Any other questions, comments? End your vote please. And that is approved, 7-0. All right, next item on the agenda is an ordinance, ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of fire station bonds for 2021 for the City of Beatrice, Nebraska in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $2.8 million to pay a portion of the cost of constructing, improving, equipping, and furnishing a new fire station to be used jointly by the city and the Beatrice Rural Fire Protection District.
I move that said ordinance be given number 21-16, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second. Moved by Claybaugh, second by Fraylin, that the ordinance be given number 21-16, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. And that is approved, 7-0. Ordinance number 21-16 by number the first time, ordinance number 21-16 by number the second time, and ordinance number 21-16 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 21-16 be passed and approved.
Right. Moved by Claybaugh, second by Fraylin, that the ordinance number 21-16 be passed and approved. With us this evening is Jay Spearman. Jay, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. I just wanted to mention that our all-in cost right now for this financing is 1.1%. It's hard telling where interest rates are going to go, but I wouldn't expect that we'd be over 1.2% when we're final. Work with Mr. Temple Meyer and Aaron to finalize all the offering documents and should be in the market within the next month or so. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions of Jay?
This is our second go-around.
This is the second series for the fire station, yes.
And the first ones went up how quick, Jay?
Excuse me?
You sold the first ones in, this is the second offering?
Second series, we sold those last year.
Yeah.
And those were sold within 24 hours?
Correct.
Yeah.
And you expect the same as this?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have good participation from the local financial institutions and expect the same.
Yeah.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
We're a good bet.
What's that?
We're a good bet.
Hope so. Anyone from the public? Jay, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Gentlemen, your vote please. And that is approved, 7-0. Ordinance number 21-16 has been passed and approved. Next is discussion and reports. Beatrice MS4 Program and Tributary 44 Drainage Basin Report. And I think we have representatives here from, or a representative here from FHU Engineering. If you want to just give us your name and address, that'd be great.
My home address, or, I'm sorry.
Works fine.
Aaron Hirsch with FHU Engineering, 11422 Miracle Hills Drive, Omaha, Nebraska.
Just real quick, I'm James Burrows, city engineer for Beatrice. Just to give you a little bit of history on, I guess, why we're here. We were tasked, the engineering department was tasked with looking at several sites pertaining to possibly a trout pond or amenity to the City of Beatrice that could be used for fishing. But at the same time, we thought about coupling that with possibly some drainage areas that we thought need to be addressed and try to improve those areas as well. We went out on site, I think we went to four different sites. They included an area down by the water park, another one was in Chautauqua Park, and ultimately we settled on the area in Hannibal Park. So that kind of got the ball rolling. FHU currently helps us with our stormwater or our MS4 program. They know our system very well, they know our storm drainage system, so they were just the logical choice in getting us going and moving forward at a fast rate, what we needed to get some answers to. So we were hoping this study would provide twofold answers for us. One is a trout pond available to us at Hannibal Park, and then what kind of drainage impacts that it may help us with. Aaron's here with FHU, as he said, he's the one that did all the studying, all the modeling of the area, and so we brought him here to present a little bit about the report and hopefully answer any questions that you might have pertaining to the calculations that I would not be able to answer. So with that, I'll turn it over, Aaron.
Yeah, I'll just briefly touch on some of the main points of the report. As James explained, we were looking at Hannibal Park for a potential fishing pond as well as some stormwater detention. And that Tributary 44 has been studied numerous times by other engineering firms dating back to 1973. And all of those firms had somewhat similar recommendations, either upsizing the culverts to relieve drainage issues or to provide detention. And, you know, ultimately, in terms of the fishing pond, we found that because of the topography of the land, because it's somewhat flat there in Hannibal Park, it's not an incised deep valley, so it takes more effort to create a fishing pond in that location. It's certainly still feasible, but it requires excavation and the construction of a dam in order to get the adequate size to support a fish population. You know, the Game and Parks Commission has guidelines, namely the depth. The depth is one of the biggest things to prevent the water from freezing and killing the fish during winter. So it is feasible, but because of the topography, because of the lay of the land, any area that's excavated for the fishing pond does not contribute to the stormwater detention. So the stormwater detention would only be from the water surface up. So an additional dam height would need to be constructed in order to provide that detention. And with that detention, you know, we looked at three different options based upon the depth of excavation. So one was, you know, a deeper pond, one was kind of in the middle where we excavated some and then dammed up higher, and then the other one was what's called a dry detention pond, and that's no fishing pond, no standing water, it's just basically a field with a dam, a dry dam. So with those three options, you know, I guess the findings is that they had minimal effect on reducing the flows in the channel. And the reason is just because of the sizing, because of the location of the pond and the sizing. So, you know, it does assist somewhat in stormwater detention, but according to the calculations, it doesn't drastically change a lot of the issues that are experienced there, especially along Grant and High Street, so.
Do you want to show them the first layout? Aaron, can you?
Yeah.
Go down to the first set of drawings in that document?
This one?
Keep going. Keep going. Till you see a drawing, basically.
I think it's on page 20.
What page?
Keep going.
It's only 17 pages long, it's not on page 20.
Yeah, I cut out the first one-ish.
Yeah, we didn't put the appendix on. Oh, you didn't, you didn't put the drawings in? Okay. Well, one of the main things, we wanted to make sure with, the trout pond that we're proposing was contained within Hannibal Park. The school is next door, you know, that's one of the key things for that elevation that you're looking at, is determining that we don't raise that dam so high that we're impeding on the school's property next door. So we were kind of handcuffed by the area that we were allowed to create this pond on. It had to be kind of a longer skinny type pond from north to south, not east to west, getting wider. So that's one of the things that we had to look at. So, like you said, it was feasible to create one, I believe, what was the size of it that we had in here? Do you remember the acres? It was like seven acres?
Yeah, yeah, it's eight acre feet, I believe, is what we ended up at.
So one is possible. And then one of the other components with this, what you were saying, was trying to leave some drainage issues that we were having downstream at High and Grant Street. So we asked them to look at that. One of the biggest things they came back with that they needed to add some additional detention areas. One would be north of Hoyt Street, which is 13 acre feet of storage. The other one was just north of Lincoln Street. There's kind of a depressed area there now that a person could use for some stormwater detention, and that would gain us about seven acre feet. Now, when you go back further in the tables, when you see what that gives us, really, I think it only gives us about another three tenths of a foot of available storage in that culvert that's under Grant and High that's causing those issues. There's a pretty hefty price tag with constructing those detention cells for getting just three tenths of a foot of additional storage. That's not for me to determine, that's for you guys to determine. But we were hoping for more, so to come back and say, hey, we knocked down the drainage detention area, that it made those culverts flow, you could have any issues? I can't tell you that. You know, we tried to design storm sewer pipe that goes underneath main roadways or in main channels for a 50-year storm event. But with that being said, when you get in town, storm sewer inlets that you see along the street are only designed to handle a five-year storm event. So what happens is, is you get engineers in town that design things for a five or 10-year storm event because you're in town. But you've got a 50-year storm event coming from the north, that's where you get in trouble. And it's just a natural progression as the city grows that you get to that part, and then you've got to make a decision, how are we going to address that? Are we going to go through and do major construction, excuse me, construction from that point on down, all the way down the river, and make sure everything can handle a 50-year storm event? It's a pretty big significant cost, and it's something that, you know, if we do a new street project, that's darn sure something that we need to look at. But that's, again, it's something that needs to be directed by the city council on what effort that you want to put into this. Yeah?
I'm just continually amazed at how much some of our projects cost. You and I have talked about this over and over. But you're looking there at the fishing pond amenities, $313,000. When I met with the Game and Parks person, he was, that was the reason he wanted to have this location, because it really wouldn't require very many other amenities at all because everything was already there at Hannibal Park. So what are the amenities that would cost $313,000?
I believe if you look from the rendering that we have in the report, it includes a boat dock, a handicap accessible boat dock, and it included another shelter, included trails associated with the area for beautification around the area. Am I missing something? Is there anything else that was included?
No, yeah, the fishing pier is definitely the lion's share of that at about $150,000. And, you know, our estimates, we are conservative, you know, we want to give you a realistic picture of what it will cost. So we do err on the higher side. But with the current bidding environment, I mean, wood, just wood, you know, the material has gone up 50% in the last year. You know, a lot of that is just an effect of COVID, you know, that shut down manufacturing and therefore prices are, you know, supply is lower, so the demand is definitely increasing. But, you know, some of the amenities could be trimmed back or they could be phased.
Yeah, because they were pretty happy with the shelter that was already there. They said nothing about a boat dock or any boats on there at all. And that was, they weren't talking about any other amenities at all.
Sure, but got to understand, this is in a city park and we're wanting to make it, you know, accessible for everybody, you know, so that's a cognitive.
Sure. A lot of that's already there, though, so.
Not around the pond, it's not. And then the fishing dock is not there. So, I mean, yeah, shelter, and our Parks Department has built those shelters, you know, before. So, but again, they're just trying to present the big picture to you and then letting you guys decide if it's something that you'd want to do or take off the table, so.
But it's something that can be phased in.
Yeah. You know? I know this report's pretty thick and has a lot of numbers in it. I'd like to have better news for you. It is what it is, though, at this point. The only thing I can say that, based on this, is, like you said, there was an engineering study back in 1973 or '79 that talked about this very issue and talked about, you know, keeping homes or keeping the corridors of these drainage ways open and don't let development squeeze these drainage basins. And we have that currently in our Drainage Criteria Manual that we've approved. There's a calculation there that talks about, you know, if it's this deep, you know, have this wide of area open for drainage. have this wide of area open for drainage. And, you know, building inspection department tries to do their best to catch those, you know. And I know down the road we're going to have areas where developers come in and they want to squeeze that again. And the only thing I can ask is for your support when that happens to make sure that this type of scenario doesn't happen again to us later on.
Well, but we did so much, we collectively, the city, did so much of this to ourselves. We allowed the build, we allowed the building, so like the retirement home at 2300 Lincoln, the church there at 2300 Lincoln, both have big roof surfaces, huge parking lot surfaces. And then we've done nothing to diffuse the water as it runs off of there. Then you add on to what, the big project that we allowed in Hannibal Park, we actually did that. We built structures, we paved parking lots, nothing goes in there. Then the other church on the other side of Hoyt Street, it has a roof, it has a parking lot, it all drains, nothing soaks in, and that's something that we collectively did. I like the idea of the pond. Rick and I have talked about this over the last year and a half or two years, and I'd like to see this development. My concern is, is the place, the people that live on Grant, on High, on Elk, that this affects because it affects their homes. And talking with some of my neighbors over the last couple of days here, you know, part of it is, so like behind my house, which is a good example, from 21st Street to where the drainage ditch is, when my wife and I first bought the home, everybody along there, there's no alley there. And everybody along there had a garden, it had hedges, and it had trees. And as the water came through there, it diffused into all their backyards. Well, everyone has taken that out. You can stand in my backyard and look to the west and see 21st Street now, you know, all the way up. That water all flows down. It's just a torrent by the time it gets to my home and my next-door neighbor's home who lives adjacent to the drainage ditch. So as we're trying to develop this, we need to develop something both downstream and upstream to alleviate this problem in this three-block span. And that's my concern, James.
Yeah, and without getting off on a big sidetrack here, you know, that's a big push of our MS4 program anymore, is to have your post-development match or be under what your pre-development condition is for drainage. That's how we control this situation. Now, there are several ways of doing this, and unfortunately, you know, we're looking at, we've looked at regional detention cells, it's kind of what we're looking at, is, you know, building a bank up, let's say, of storage that we have so that when development comes in, you know, that we don't have a detention cell for every little home or a detention cell for every section of development, that we have a large one that allows a large area to be developed and it still holds the same amount of water. You know, that's what we're looking at, part of our program. And there are several areas in Beatrice that would be very well suited for a detention cell. But, you know, we still have some of these areas that we need to get addressed that has some stormwater runoff issues that's affecting some people.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Bob? You know, maybe this goes back to cost a little bit, as I know you're right. Right now, the bidding climate is pretty high. So is this something that can just keep on the forefront? I mean, and I guess the other follow-up question I would have, is there a better time of the year than others? Where the bidding is, I mean, right now, it's not good.
You know, what I've found is maybe it's different from what you've seen. I find that your bidding environment's always best during the winter because everybody's kind of at a stalemate at that point and trying to get their projects lined up for the next year. You know, and then when you try to go out for bid in the middle of the summer, everybody's busy and they're going to throw a high number at it because if they get it, they want to make money at it. But with that being said, the environment is just higher than the kite right now, all across the board. And Tobias can attest to this. I've had to come to him on three projects here lately. I'm normally high. I'm known for being high on my estimates. And I've missed it three times now just because of the bidding environment. And we've had to move projects around to get it to fit our budgets.
I can certainly believe that. We've had that same issue.
And it's, you know, it hasn't been just lumber. I mean, I'm talking, the projects I've been doing has been asphalt and concrete and dirtwork. So it's across the board. We're seeing it.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public?
Here's your chance, Steve.
Hey, I appreciate you guys doing the study. I live on the High Street home, and so we unfortunately had flooding this last, about a year ago or a little less year ago. And so now, every time it rains, you know, I have to go check that culvert because it doesn't seem. And I know we had an exceptional rain that evening, but since then, you know, I've kind of monitored the one-inch, two-inch rain, and that water gets flowing through there pretty good. And I guess the frustration and concern that my wife and I have is that we intend to sell our home, but we have a home that, you know, we tried to move out of that home ever. Our ability to sell or market that home is to be tough to try and sell a home to somebody with known flooding issues. And then now, to kind of hear the multitude of prior reports that have essentially supported that same hypothesis dating back to 1979. It's not, this isn't a new problem. And so I just hope that you guys take that into consideration and try to do something to mitigate that in the other homes on that area. I've talked to several neighbors, and we're not the only ones that it flooded. And if you go back to years before, there's been several people along that canal that are at Tributary 44 that flooded. So I know that we're not the only ones with financial losses on that. And I just believe to see that continue. We've got so much evidence to suggest that there should be some modifications made.
I'm Don Harmon. I live just to the north of Steve. And I think we have observed in that drainage way what Ted was alluding to, the fact that what seems to be a typical rain seems to be sending a lot more volume of water through that waterway than there was 10 or 15 years ago. And, I mean, we've talked about this possible runoff north of us as being contributing, and I think that's what we have observed.
Yeah, and again, that's one thing, you know, everybody knows their primary that could be developed is north of Hoyt Street. And it's something that we take very serious, and we want to make sure that we address, we don't compound this problem, that we make it better and not worse.
I think we have to, we have to address it both. Not going to change what's there in between these two, between Grant and High and Elk. Those three blocks between there. It's hard to change what's there. I mean, you can make the tubes bigger. You could probably, you know, but the thing is, we need to address something downstream from Elk to where, you know, say, from Elk Street to where it gets into the river so that flows away quicker, and we need to slow it down coming from the north. And we need to figure out how to do that. That's part of, as I read through the report, I found that information lacking. I thought there would be a bit more of that in there, what we can do.
We've, we have addressed downstream just through different other projects, meaning that this is the same drainage basin that flows underneath Highway 136 that the state has, and that culvert's a 50-year storm.
Yeah, it's big.
But it also goes down to Flowing Springs. And we've already met with them, and they currently have a project that's going to be underway to increase the size of that pipe that goes into Trib 44 to make sure that it doesn't back up or cause any issues upstream.
But it slows down at 24 Street, it slows down at Elk, and then backs up it this way, too.
One question in the back.
Ashley Mason. I think the idea of a boat dock would be essential. It would create opportunity for kids in the area. When Homestead Days comes through, I mean, they're sending kids all the way out to Rockville Lake, which is a great opportunity, but having something locally near the city, women, chicks, women, learning opportunities that the Parks Department can offer, I think a boat ramp is a smart idea.
Thank you. Anybody else? Gary?
Dr. Palmeyer, as you suggested, the value of your house is not a concern, it's a fact. What happened with that? Also, I believe that house had some water in the basement before you owned it. Do you believe that it'd be true?
After having to do repairs on it this time, yes, we are aware of that.
You're also aware that whoever, if it was represented by a Nebraska licensed real estate person, they gave you a disclosure that had to disclose to you as a buyer the adverse material facts, and that was certainly a big one. And I know it's none of my business about how your insurance paid or anything like that, but if a licensed person did that, and I think it probably could have been, knew the law, and I hope that you look into that for what's happened to you because you would be owed something in my mind.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone from the public? Any more from the public? All right, James, Aaron, thank you very much for the report. And we'll try to do the best we can to figure out what we're going to do. Right, James?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, especially with our street projects, you know, we'll try to do what we can to increase those any time of when possible.
All right. Thanks again. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing on the acquisition of real property from Sean Schwaninger and Shereen Schwaninger, Gage County Parcel ID Number 00576000 and 00579000.
So as we talked about last time, the Water Department has the opportunity to acquire some state revolving funds, SRF funds. We have talked about one of the projects we look at using those funds for is acquiring additional property for wellfields, for future development. And so on the map, you can see our current wellfields out there by Elm Road and Southwest 75th Road. The parcel that we're talking about tonight is just to the east of that, shown in the white, I guess, if you will. That parcel there is what we're looking to acquire moving forward. It was listed for sale, so you had a willing seller, and that's the parcel we're looking to buy. If we get approved with the SRF funds, it's also contingent upon it being tested and having adequate water quality and quantity for municipal services.
Comments? I think it's a real visionary plan that the city is looking at right now. And the land's available, it's in the right area, and the dollars are available, and the interest rate is perfect, so. Any other questions? Anybody from the public? All right. Yes, sir?
We discussed about this, and you said plenty for the future, but this puts us in a position that over probably the next, how many years, that we won't have to worry about this?
Well, your current wellfield you bought in the 60s. Steve would tell me the exact year, but I know it was in the 60s. You didn't put a well into it until the early 90s. And so you owned it for 25, 30 years before you had to put a well into it. It may be the same thing here, but it's going to set you up for the next couple of generations of individuals living in Beatrice to not have to worry about water quality or quantity.
Thanks. That's what I wanted said, saying.
All right, motion to close the public hearing.
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:47 PM. Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Billzbach, that the public hearing be closed at 7:47 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved 7 to 0. Next is a resolution, Resolution 6709, executing the purchase agreement, addendum, and all necessary documents to acquire real estate from Sean Schwaniger and Shereen Schwaniger in exchange for $1,243,296.
I move that Resolution Number 6709 be passed and adopted. Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that Resolution Number 6709 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen?
Again, I just note, closing's been pushed out quite a ways because obviously we have to make sure we get our application into the state and we get our SRF funds, and those call come through. We've got to make sure we have the water tested, all that kind of stuff. But that's the only thing that's different about this closing. The addendum is, they initially signed the purchase agreement, then they came back and asked if they could do a 1031 exchange. So that's what the addendum covers, is their ability to do a 1031 exchange, which does not impact our selling or our buying of the property whatsoever.
There's not a timing issue with them, is there?
No.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved 7 to 0. Resolution Number 6709 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution 6710, executing the agreement for professional services between the city and JEO Consulting Group Incorporated, wherein JEO will provide construction services for the improvements to lift station number five as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move that Resolution Number 6710 be passed and adopted. Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Fraylon, that Resolution 6710 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
Lift station five is a glenover area. If you're coming up on Second Street, it's around those curves there. It's currently located in the floodplain. We're looking to make an improvement to that lift station and bring the controls up out of the floodplain and also make, so they have backups, backup generation, that kind of stuff. They, that lift station serves all the industrial park. So in the event something happened and you were not able to use that lift station, you'd start to see things back up because of the industrial park and the usage that comes down there. JEO's have designed it. We're out for bids already. Construction should start here fairly soon. And the price of this contract is $4,000 for them to do the construction observation.
And that's from beginning to finish?
Correct. And it's up to $4,000 just based upon time and material.
Questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved 7 to 0. Resolution 6710 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution 6711, executing the assignment of contract between the city and the village of Cortland, Nebraska, wherein the city will provide garbage and trash collection services to the village of Cortland.
I move that Resolution Number 6711 be passed and adopted. Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billzbach, that Resolution Number 6711 be passed and adopted.
Sanitary Garbage had a contract with the village of Cortland to provide them with garbage service. That contract ran through June 30th of this year. Cortland has agreed to assign that over to the city of Beatrice, and so we will haul trash for the village of Cortland through the end of June. And we have submitted a bid to continue that service beyond in July and moving forward. So this is the first step, is to cover the first couple of months.
Questions? Audience? And your vote, please. Sorry? What's your question?
I just wonder if it's prudent to continue working outside of the city limits with trash when we haven't even settled everything here within the city with its own city members.
And I think the answer, my answer would be, is that that's what sanitary garbage has offered to these other communities. I beg your pardon? We're assuming their contract.
Okay.
Yeah, so they provided the services to these communities, the outlying communities. We're going to do the same, as long as they sign a contract with us. So it's their option. Okay? All right, keep that. And your vote, please. And that is approved 7 to 0. Resolution 6711 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6712, entering into an interlocal Cooperation Act agreement between the city and the village of Dakin, wherein the city will provide garbage collection services for the village of Dakin.
I move that Resolution Number 6712 be passed and adopted. Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that Resolution 6712 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
Sanitary Garbage had provided garbage service to the village of Dakin before we purchased all of their assets. Rather than assigning that contract over because it was an older contract, Village of Dakin simply signed a new contract before you tonight.
How many years is it?
Five years.
How many households are in Dakin that we'll be picking up at?
Oh, I think the number is 100-ish. I don't remember exactly off the top of my head.
And we'll use our rear loaders for that community as some of the outlying communities.
Correct.
I guess my only concern is, I hear it quite a bit, that we're paying $18 a month in Beatrice. And if there's 100 places in Dakin, they're going to be paying basically 13 and a quarter. And that's some of the stuff that comes up quite often when you get hit about this. You know, they're getting a discounted rate over what Beatrice is, and then bringing the trash in from the other communities, filling up the city dump. So just trying to look for clarification on, I know that we're going to assume their contract. We signed a new contract. That's all, that's all good. But what are we going to do in the future to even up the rates?
So one thing we've noticed is that the rates have not increased under sanitary garbage's contracts, oftentimes for extended period of time. We can't go into those communities and ask for significant price increases at one time. Every one of our contracts says that we will be back to ask for price increases. It's up to their village board, obviously, to agree, but they can't, they cannot agree if it's a reasonable ask. So, you know, 50 cents a dollar, something like that's going to be, you know, $10 is not probably going to be agreeable. So those types of things are what we're going to look to do over time to slowly bring those communities up. You may ask them, why would you go out and pick up Dakin, Cortland, those type of places? You want them to get... You want them to continue to feed into your landfill. That's ultimately what you want to do. You want to continue to have that trash flow into your landfill and not somebody else's. And so that's why you'll go out and continue to service those contracts and bring that garbage to the city Beatrice.
Yeah, just looking for you to state that for clarification for the people who ask the question all the time. Because I ran the numbers, I mean, there's, there's profit in it if you look at it and so.
And yes, it does fill up your landfill, but at the same time you need the incoming trash to come in to keep your variable costs low, to help pay off your fixed costs that you have for running a landfill because you need a set number of guys to run the landfill, whether you're bringing in 13,000 tons or 26,000 tons. Number of people, the equipment out there doesn't change.
Yeah, what Tobias was gently telling you is part of the problem is the sanitary garbage that we purchased, they hadn't raised their rates in these smaller communities for decades and so we had had those same increases, they had failed to do that, now we're gonna play catch-up. That's a, that's a lot less delicate than what Tobias was trying to do.
I've had the discussion with him via email, so I knew what the answer was, I just wanted somebody else to say it so people could ask him, say about it.
Well, Jason knew and Jason's just sat there and let Tobias swing again, I noticed that, so I thought I'd, I thought I'd weigh in, but yeah.
No, I knew the answer, I just wanted it publicly stated so people could understand. Any other questions from, from the audience? All right, your vote please. And that is approved, 7-0. Resolution 6712 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution 6713, establishing various fees.
I move that resolution number 6713 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Bilzbuck, that resolution 6713 has been passed and adopted.
Again, we have a fees resolution that we list all of our fees in. We updated it last time for a number of the fees in regard to garbage service. However, we did not include a couple of roll-off sizes. We didn't have a 10-yard, a 15-yard or a 40-yard roll-off listed in our previous rate ordinance and so we've added those into this rate ordinance because we recently acquired boxes that are 10, 15 and 40 yards in size and we'd have a fee for them. So that was the only change to the fee resolution.
Questions? Audience? Your vote please. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Am I reading this correctly that the senior and disabled have an additional removal fee of $12 every month?
Where are you?
It's under residential monthly orders, are they having a lower rate?
So if you qualify as being senior disabled and there is a set formula you have to go through, then their fee is $12.70.
So it's lower?
Yes.
Okay, I was reading it as an additional.
We don't double charge them.
I'm, I'm sure.
Any other questions? And your vote please. And that is approved, 7-0. 6713 has been passed and adopted. Next is a public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anything for the public forum? Gentlemen, the audience, yes, come on up.
Ashley Mason, 1300 Lincoln Street. The first part here, someone couldn't be at the meeting, so they asked me to, they couldn't come tonight to the meeting, so they asked me to ask a couple of questions for you. When they were going through the city website, they noticed that there's some missing minutes, specifically the Community Redevelopment Authority meeting on 11/20/20, the Board of Health meeting on 12/21/20 and the Planning and Zoning meeting on 1/4/21. They were looking for those minutes and they were unable to find them. I know that for the Board of Health meeting, those minutes can't be approved until the follow-up meeting. Is it possible that even though we can go into the office to get them, that they can just be put on the website with a note that says, you know, not approved, will be approved, you know, pending the dates since the Board of Health isn't meeting regularly anymore? So those were their questions, but mine separately were, many cities the size of Beatrice offer live city council meetings. I know that you guys record the meetings and you upload them at a later date, but we're wondering why we can't have them live. It makes it easier because sometimes that upload time is days or even up to a week afterwards and that makes it really difficult for the public to participate. But if the meetings were done live through video, the system's already in place, then more of the city could be present and participate in these meetings. So that was all I had today.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next is discussions and reports. Talking about the garbage service update, felt that the city council needed an update on how things are going. And Jason Moore, who is in charge of the program, Jason, would you give the city council a bit of an update on how your first day went? And Kerry McGurrie, beg your pardon?
Just in case you have any feeling questions or routing questions. Jason Moore, Landfill Streets and Kerry McGurrie. Today, you know, was our first day with the side loaders. Truthfully, things went remarkably well. They really did. I was, you know, skeptical like I think a lot, you know, not knowing just how things were gonna go. But truthfully, our side loaders were done with the area by 1:45. I feel we missed a few spots, but I, I think we probably knew we were done. There was, when you have operators that you're putting into a new piece of equipment that they've never, you know, they've, they've demoed it a couple of times, but you're, you're gonna stick them into a piece of equipment in the dark and you're gonna have them head out onto streets that, you know, not everybody knows every street. And, and I provided them with maps and I drew little arrows to help them out a little bit so that they could, so that we could get along this morning, so on the, on the residential routes here in town. And so, you know, I, I know there was a few spots that we missed, but I, I think we did really well. For the first day, again, our, our rear loaders were done with boxes, picking up cardboard by probably 9:30, 10 o'clock. They moved into commercial rear loaders and they were done by 2:15-ish probably. And so, and today was a pretty big day. You know, I, I think as we look at things, we may look to move some of our stuff around a little bit on our cardboard containers that we bring in, just because of the amount of cardboard that we brought in today, not knowing how much for certain was gonna happen. We received a large shipment from temps out of the Marysville area. We bring in their recycling, we charge them to bring in their cardboard, so their load came into us today. So, so our, my recycling crew that I have were slightly surprised by the amount of cardboard and so, but they worked on cardboard all day long, so. But it was a good day for a first day, for, for a department that is just starting up and guys that was their first day working on it. I, I think we did really well.
I know Kerry took a few phone calls today.
I took a few, about 250. So I'm taking a lot of phone calls with a variety of questions and some people asking about new service, just routes and just a variety of questions. So signing up for carryout services, senior discounts, the, the rate that she asked about just a moment ago and how to get that application and follow through with that and the yard waste service, are we getting people signing up for that and just a number of different things?
And yard waste is picked up on what day?
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays.
Yes, sir.
I think I've noticed just a lot, just people talking about what services are available, people signing up for recycling and carryout and things like that that before I was still enough they knew were available to them. So we've had a number of people just knew signed up without us really going out and advertising those programs yet. But I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to say thank you to a whole lot of people and I'm not gonna try to name them all because I might forget somebody. But from everybody in the office who has handled thousands of phone calls, from figuring out what day my trash is picked up, to where should I put it, to I don't know how to use this new thing, they've done a great job handling all of those phone calls. Our IT guys working with getting routes set up and make sure iPads were available and trying to work through all those bugs and the whole new system there that we've never done before, getting those things ready. Jason, his crew, I mean, Jason and I walked into the building together on Friday afternoon for the first time at about 4 o'clock and by Monday at 6, you had trucks rolling. So I mean, that was a pretty short turnaround. He did a great job getting, making sure things were ready to go. Some tires were changed, trucks were ready to roll out the door Monday morning and so I wanna make sure I just take an opportunity to thank everybody at the city for all the work they've done setting up rates. This thing has consumed City Hall for the last several months and they did a great job getting, getting ready to go today.
Joe?
Question?
Sure.
Clarification, yard waste, do they continue to use their old thing? You don't want people putting yard waste in new containers.
Nope, use your old cans.
Yep. I was asked that, I wanna make sure that people knew that.
Can I have clarification on that yard waste one? Previously, the sticks had to go out with the trash and only leaves and lawn clippings could go with the yard waste stuff. Is that still, like I need to put my sticks in these new trash cans or can they go in with the leaves and stuff?
The sticks can go in with your new can as long as they're less than 16 inches or, and three inches in diameter and preferably bundled together. So those can go in that can.
Do you want me to bundle them and then put them in the big can?
Correct. And then the leaves and the grass can go, they go with the yard waste, which is the special pickup.
Can I ask for clarification on why the sticks don't go with, what's the thought process? I mean, we're not horribly new to Beatrice, but I've never had to separate my sticks, which can compose from my yard waste. And I just can't imagine trying to get that in there with like trash bags and not create giant mess.
Because the, the grass ends up going out to the compost site, which then gets turned into mulch and to run through our machinery, if you run the sticks through our machinery, it causes problems.
It doesn't turn into mulch, it turns into dirt. We make dirt out of it. If you go to the, if you...
I, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just, I can only imagine, like normally I would just have a separate trash can for my sticks and then like my garbage and that kind of stuff would go another, I stick them out at the same time, but I'm just imagining like trying to shove sticks in that trash can with my bags with garbage and then this huge rip and mess occurring.
That's why we're trying to keep it in 16-inch pieces so that we don't, for one, if you get longer pieces in there, it's gonna wedge in the tote and then it also has a better chance of wedging in the trucks. The last thing I do, the last thing I want is for when the arm, the automated arm comes up and gives it a shake, is for something to get stuck in there and then, and then my guy have to get out. So we're trying to keep the sticks that are small enough so that they, they move freely. I believe the last time, I believe the length was three feet, I believe if I was right. The last thing, three or four feet even, the last thing with our totes being about 40 or 44 inches tall, I just, it's, it's gonna interfere with the garbage. It's gonna interfere with the, with how the ram compacts the garbage. So we're trying to keep the brush very small so that we don't have issues. The last thing we wanna do is get something wedged in there and then, you wouldn't think it, but if you go and you start shoving on a stick or it's the right size, the right diameter, it's gonna do some damage somewhere.
Oh, I believe it, I just wanna understand, I mean, and I'm sure I'm not the only person who's confused on why we do it this way, so everyone has clear understanding.
Tim, do you have a question?
Yeah, Jason, I just wondered what was the feedback from the drivers? I mean, I, I seen them working today over in the Glenover area and I seen one of the citizens out watching the, and I stopped and watched it myself since I hadn't watched it live too, so what did the drivers have to say?
You know what, they really liked it. The very first, and for our first area being the route that we had this morning, it was the area around Mosaic from Sixth over to 11th and, and, and then it was the area from, from High Street north to Logan for between Fourth and Sixth and then it was the Glenover area and then it was Coyle Trailer Park and then it was Bear Creek subdivision. So these guys jumped all over and, and I, I came out yesterday and was working with IT yesterday to make up, to make certain that our maps were updated correctly on the iPads so that the guys outside of town were correct, but we couldn't get the iPads set up for in-town. So I printed off, I printed off the area around the Mosaic area on a, on 11 by 17 and I printed off an area of the, the fourth north of here to Logan and then I printed off the northern area Glenover as well. And so I, I broke it all down because, let me, let's face it, not, not everybody knows all of our streets and it's so easy to miss a street when it's a half a block here, a half a block. Tomorrow, really other than Darwin being kind of a half-block street, tomorrow's gonna be one of the easiest routes we have tomorrow and I believe Friday because it's a block. I'm gonna tell a guy to start on the north side, I'm gonna tell a guy to start on the south side and they're gonna work towards each other. And, and so being on this area, it was a little easier to get mixed up, especially around the co-op and then you're kinda going around, around Mosaic and, and so it was easier to get mixed around. They told me when I talked to them this morning, when we got done with the Mosaic area and we moved over into the area north of High, they said then, it, it was like it clicked. They're getting better. The arm is all ran by fingers, it's just, it's, it's not a toggle switch, but it's more of a, well, it's a switch, but it's, you just, you run it with your three fingers. It's easy to, you gotta be a little careful because if you get too close to a vehicle and you hit automatic, it doesn't know, it doesn't know what's there. If it's too close to a ball hitch on a truck, it's gonna try, it's gonna try and push around that ball hitch. So you gotta be careful when you go out to grab the can, once you get a hold of the can, you can hit automatic backwards and it'll bring it back, it'll dump it, but you gotta manually go out if, you know, to be a little more controlled to go out and get a hold of things. So, you know, it, it takes a little bit of concentration.
Good.
Especially, especially being in a truck, in a, a new truck in the dark, plus you're sitting on the passenger side seat of a vehicle, which is something entirely new for everybody to try and drive on the wrong side of a vehicle. So the guys told me, other than rubbing curbs a couple of times, you know, they, they, they kinda, they're getting there.
Did they have to get out and move any containers?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. A lot of them were parked behind cars, blocked behind cars. A lot of them were, were too far away from the curb. They were 12, 15 feet back. The guys would have to get out and drag them up so that the eight-foot arm could get a hold of them. So we, we do, and then we also have the porch side pickup that we have set up and so, you know, there, I think there was probably about 20-ish give or take that we had today. I was going through the, the spreadsheet tonight, marking off, highlighting the ones for the guys tomorrow, so in the morning I'll give them a spreadsheet of all of the ones so that, you think when you come up by a house and you think, well, there's no tote there, the first thing you think is, well, they must've forgot to put it out. Well, now they have to stop and they have to look at the address and they have to look through their spreadsheet to see, okay, yeah, it's a curb side pickup or a, pardon me, a porch side pickup. So he parks the truck, he runs up, he grabs the tote, brings it out, dumps it and then he runs it back up and sets it off again. So there's a little more to, to what they're doing, but so far, so good.
So the ones you had trouble with, like parked in the wrong spots, do you send letters to inform the resident then so they know how to correct it or?
I, I haven't, we, we weren't gonna look at that just because it's a lot to ask the operator every time because a vehicle being parked there today doesn't mean the vehicle's gonna be parked there next Monday. Honestly, it's, it's gonna be one of those, it's gonna be one of those learning lessons for everybody to know where they put their tote at and, and, and to know where people generally park in front of their properties.
Good. Another question, Ted?
I, I didn't take a lot of contact and, and I appreciate you, both you and Tobias, getting back to the people that I, that I couldn't, that I couldn't fix myself. You know, you, the two or three that you, that I, that I passed on to you are the two or three that I couldn't explain it away myself. And I appreciate you getting back to those people and, and dealing with them. My question is, as it goes, kinda like what Mike's was, as this goes forward, you know, there's a learning curve with all of it and, you know, this is essentially, essentially what your guys are doing. I've, I've been doing it for 35 years, you know, I, so I understand that. You know, it's a learn, you know, you learn what people expect and, and what to expect at each address. So, but my question is, is the, the area that I represent, there is a lot of it is the original town of Beatrice. And in 1870, 1880, when they built these homes, there weren't driveways. You know, there weren't, you know, so, so these people have had alley pickup for, you know, years. I mean, at a certain point you look at that and say, okay, we're, you know, we, we, we can move into the alleys, we can do what the people in those areas ask. I, I know what your response was, but are we gonna review this at some point or are you, are you just gonna ask the citizenry to adapt to us?
No, we'll continue to review every route and everything that we're doing constantly as we're moving forward. There will be certain areas that we know probably have to go and change, whether it's changing the day that their pickup is because Jason comes back and says, we have too many guys on Monday, but not enough on Tuesday and so we'll move some around. We'll look at alleys as well and say, hey, after we've done this, which ones make sense? Which ones can we get our, our truck into? Which ones can we not get it into? So no, we will constantly be reviewing everything that we're doing to try to make it as efficient to run and, and for the people as well.
That's, that's what I told them and I just want that to the public, so, thanks. And thanks so much and I, I, I agree with Tobias. This, it's not as easy as it looks.
You know, and Ted, you know, we've, we've discussed some form of an automated loading with garbage for over ten years.
More than that.
Oh, yeah, and that's just that, before I was on council, we discussed this years ago.
Yep.
About trying to find ways to, to improve efficiency on, on our garbage pickup and other municipalities, and as well as other cities, and I believe with, maybe in Arizona, I believe maybe you had brought up at one time or something about how we'd had this, and so, you know, I think this is something, we're going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Watching this truck work, especially in an area, you know, a gentleman can pull